Evening everyone. May 13th Ascension Parish zoning mission is now in session. Mobile call. Let it be known that all commissioners present with the exception of Mr. Maury Bishop. Acceptance of minutes this time need to. Acceptance of minutes for the February 11th meeting.
I move for acceptance.
Second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Acceptance of the minutes of meeting for March 11th zoning meeting.
I'm moved.
Second.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Acceptance of the minutes of the meeting for April 8th planning and zoning mission.
Didn't we accept those at the last?
You have to do it in this one too.
Do we have to do it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do it again. I move.
Second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All minutes have been accepted unanimously. No comments?
Lindsay makes us do that.
For the record, we noted that both items that were proposed, item A and B, have been postponed. A little staff report, my understanding there is discussion for industrial overlay.
Yes sir, so tonight during the staff report, I'm going to hand it off to Mike Eads with the Ascension Economic Development Committee, Commission Committee, whatever they're called, and they're going to give a presentation during the staff report about the work we've been working on for the last 10 months, 12 months? Long period of time on a concept for the West Bank. And the result of this discussion, we're hoping, is a recommendation for a public hearing at next month's commission meeting.
Good evening Joe. My name is Mike Eads, I'm the president and CEO of the Ascension Economic Development Corporation. You saw Councilman Oliver Joseph here earlier, and we were hoping he would be able to stay to make the introduction of what we're here to talk to you about, but he had a prior commitment and had to leave. I have with me Bill Dawson, who's the chairman of our board, and Lisa Laws, who's our project manager. This young man back here is Taylor Grabois, who is with CSRS Engineers and is our project engineer on all things site related that we get involved in. Very quickly, the mission of Ascension Economic Development Corporation is very simple, and that mission is to maximize economic opportunity in Ascension Parish. What we're here to talk to you about tonight is right up that alley. I think we're all aware that, you know, we have a portion of our parish which hasn't enjoyed the economic success that the East Bank has. And I think what we, I think, I know what we're, the concept we're going to present to you tonight has a wonderful amount of opportunity to change that. About two years ago, we started a very extensive process of taking a look at vacant land in Ascension Parish for future economic development projects. It wasn't, it didn't take a rocket scientist to, to make your eyes go to the map, immediately to the map and see, if I can get this to come up. Oh, I'm, okay. This is approximately 17,000 acres of land on the West Bank of the river in the McCall Modest area. Just to give you a little scale there, it has 10 miles of river frontage, four and a half miles of frontage along LA Highway 1 and the UP Railroad. Again, that's about 17,000 acres. We've been working on this, as Ricky mentioned, for a number of months to see if we can start the process of making this into a well-planned, shared services industrial megapark, for lack of a better term. We've had numerous meetings with property owners in the area, we've had numerous meetings with parish officials, Ricky and his cohorts. One of the things we did was enter into a memorandum of understanding with 16 of the largest property owners in that area. I gave you a copy of that MOU, I want to go over that very, very briefly. The purpose of this MOU is to provide for, at least preliminary, the master planning process for turning this into a shared services industrial area. With the purpose, specific purpose of creating jobs for Ascension Parish citizens, providing economic diversification and increasing tax base. The, by voluntary, this is voluntary participation on the property owners in which they agreed to the following, to work with us and our partners toward development framework for rezoning this for industrial and, and support services use. To allow access to the property so we can perform due diligence and to allow Ascension Economic Development Corporation Baton Rouge Area Chamber and Louisiana Economic Development to market the property during this process. The reason this is a three-way agreement between the property owners, BRAC, and us is that's the way that we access funds from LED that are earmarked for these kind of purposes. Yeah, we, they, we actually have the ability, under certain conditions, to, to get a 75%, get 75% of the due diligence work paid for by LED in this process. The other thing it says, in here, this agreement is in effect for one year, and this dated around the first of April or so. And during that one year, we, AEDC, are charged with working with parish officials like yourself to developing the, the framework of rezoning this property, to perform certain due diligence, to, to see if this property is indeed amenable to, to what we have in mind, such as phase one environmental, cultural, archaeological, geotech, wetlands, and on and on. And thirdly, to develop a, a concept of funding to perform the, this detailed due diligence and ultimately the development of the property. The, this agreement says that if AEDC is able to deliver those three items within one year, then this agreement will automatically extend for an additional year. And in that additional year is when the master planning would take place of the project and the detailed marketing plans and engineering plans, et cetera, to, to develop the property. They'll give you that as a background. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Taylor Grabois for a moment to talk to you about some of the details of what we've done and what we're going to do.
Thank you very much, Mike. And Commissioners, as Mike said, my name is Taylor Grabois, I'm with CSRS Engineers and Architects out of Baton Rouge. And roughly two years ago, we were selected to assist AEDC on this project and have been working very diligently for the last 10 months on this West Bank project specifically. Identifying the property was, was pretty trivial. I mean, when you look at a map of Ascension Parish and look at the West Bank, it's, I think everybody knows there's a lot of opportunity with open land there. So, we came in to take a look at what this property has to offer in terms of assets that could drive economic development activity. And when I say economic driver type activity, you're talking about job creators, talking about high capex type projects that, that attract people to this area and increase the job growth and population growth. So, looking at this area and seeing what, what, what could we do to position it for economic development purposes? Obviously, you have the Mississippi River, you have a UP main line that goes through this area, and you, you have a lot of available land. So identifying it was easy, we think there's opportunity here. What we did is, is through a series of collaborative meetings with the landowners, project stakeholders, Ricky's office, parish officials, local council people, we got everybody sort of rowing the boat in the same direction, and then we took a very, very high-level look at some of the things that could be potential deal breakers, we call them fatal flaws. So in that, in that context, we looked at flood zone, wetlands, recognize environmental concerns on DEQ databases, no superfund type things, you know, existence of, of those types of issues, air quality research and, and potential air permitting issues, I think, I think it's, as you may well know, this area's in non-attainment, that's, that's becoming an issue, getting air permits in the Mississippi River corridor. So we looked at that as a potential issue. We look, we looked at navigation constraints. On the, it's, when you look at the, the navigation charts, it's, it's, it's no surprise why the East Bank of the river is developed first. All the deep water access is on the East Bank of the river because that's the Cut Bank side where you have deep channel access. We do have some deep channel access on this side, it is, we're, we're studying the availability of how many ships you could possibly dock there, but that's another issue we looked at. So once we, once we took a look at a very high level of these things, we all felt like there was enough there to warrant taking it to the next step. So that being said, which, that kind of led us to developing the overlay district in conjunction with the land, engaging the landowners to make sure they wanted to participate. So the overlay district will enable or provide a framework mechanism for this property to be used as industrial uses. There's, there's an overlay text that, that is going to be a companion to this map. So, so that's what we're, we're asking for tonight in order to position this property or as much of it as possible to land economic developer, development type projects. So with that said, I'll let Mike explain and expand on some of the public engagement we've had to date.
Yeah, I just wanted to take a second and make, and remake the point perhaps, that we didn't do this in a vacuum. We have had seven meetings with the landowners in this impacted area. We've had 10 meetings with the little, elected and appointed leaders of this parish, including Ricky and his, his people. We've had three meetings with LED and BRAC, where we talked about, you know, the, the project and how it'd be funded and, and what their input was on it. We've had about six or seven meetings of, with our legal counsel to, you know, talk about, you know, a development framework, a legal, legal framework, which is still up in the air by the way. And so, you know, all total, that's been about 26 meetings we've had here in the last few months. And like I said, we have not done this in a vacuum to arrive at this point. And we'll let Taylor get into some of the more details about, about the proposed overlay.
So in terms of the overlay, what is it, what does it do? And, and, and why are we, why are we here tonight asking for your support? What the, what the overlay does is it establishes, and again, working with some of the officials in Ascension and the stakeholders, it was, it was decided as, as a group that it was the best to pursue an overlay because your, your governance already has some overlay districts in it. So we felt like that was the best way to achieve what we were trying to do within the context of your existing development codes. The overlay district would create an overlay boundary, and, and the map would have to be approved that establishes the boundary. And then within the boundary, there would be the overlay district language that would control how, how the property within the overlay could be developed. And within the overlay, you basically have heavy, medium, and light industrial uses along with, along with mixed use. So in terms of how we got to, to some of those uses is that obviously we're trying to encourage industrial uses for economic development, economic driver projects. We are also recognizing that within this area, you do have existing residences and you do have existing uses that are currently happening today. So we wrote the framework, or the proposed framework, to try to accommodate the existing uses that are already in place in this area. Obviously, we want this to be a good thing for everybody within it, within this project area in terms of raising property values, in terms of positioning properties for future development that would bring a higher value to the property owners. So we, we, we want this to be good for everybody, we think it, we think it, everybody's on board with it by, by the landowners agreeing to participate. So, so this map I have shown now, it would be, this would be, I guess, an illustration of what it could look like if the full overlay was ever built out. And again, you know, this is probably a 25 to 30-year build-out type project. In terms of scale, it's probably, if you could think of Geismar when it started, it was, it was probably an idea like this, and Geismar today is obviously a, a big, a big economic driver for Ascension Parish. So if the overlay was put into practice over the next 20 to 30 years, this is, this is just an illustration of what it could look like. You know, will it, will it look like that 25 years from now? I don't know, because a lot can change between here and now. So this, again, this is just an illustration. I have another, I have another map that shows, Mike talked about the MOUs. Well, this is a map that basically shows which property owners agreed to the MOUs. So as you can see, as a result, as a result of some of the, you know, landowner engagement and collaboration with all the landowners in the area, this is a map of all the landowners that have signed MOUs. And we have put, we were able to put, I think roughly 14...
14, 750.
14, 750. So that's what this map...
Covered under those MOUs.
So that's what this map represents, is the, is the participation of the landowners in this area. So this is very, just to get to this point, this is very much...
Is that all the landowners?
Say again?
Is that all the landowners?
No, there's about, excuse me. In, in total, and don't hold me to this number, I believe in, in that project area, there's 276 landowners total. This represents 16 of the larger owners.
But you said 17,000 acres is what you were looking at for the overlay?
Yes, for the whole district.
And this is, this is 14,000 of those that have already agreed?
14, 750.
Of the 17,000 already agreed?
Yes.
It's a big percentage.
Yeah, and what, what, what you're pointing out is that the overlay district boundary is actually larger than this MOU map of landowners that signed up. And the reason for that is you have existing residences in that area where they, they would be inside the overlay. But the MOU, the impetus behind the, getting the MOU signed is, this is the land, this is the group of landowners that provides access to the river and the rail. So really, if you don't get this key group of, of critical landowners, you really don't have a project. So that was really, really, really what we had to do going in is get, is get some of the critical folks to agree to participate.
So that, so that MOU that you get them to sign, y'all said you had to start, you guys had to start rezoning different pieces of property within the year. Right now, most of it's, just about all of it's on conservation right now, you'd have to start doing the MUs and the buffer zones and...
It's not the actual rezoning, the, the agreement says that the, the, essentially the overlay zone, the overlay would, has to be in process within a year. Then when, when a property owner, you know, would like to have their property rezoned, say we have a prospect and, you know, wants 500 acres, and the property owner or owners would have to go through the process, through a process, of actually having it rezoned to that allowable rezoning. This, we're not suggesting that this be, this is not a zoning map, this is an allowable use map, I guess, is for lack of a better word.
I figured we were fixing to be busy.
And Ricky, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that's accurate.
Is the existing mega site in this overlay area?
No, it is not.
It's not?
It's, it's further down river. I just want to talk to you a little bit about some of the features of, of what's, what's shown on this map. Along the, along the, along Highway 405 where you have the existing residential is proposed in the overlay to be changed to MU. And there, as you can see there, there are buffers around that. In fact, there's two, there's two buffers. The first is a light industrial of 660 feet, and the second is a medium industrial of 660 feet. So you have a proposed buffer of a total of 1,320 feet. When we originally approached the landowners about this concept, we only had 660 feet perpendicular to the river. And based on their feedback, we had made the suggestion to increase that to 1,320. Lateral or parallel to the river against the residential, we're suggesting that we maintain the 660 feet to ensure, you know, a pathway to access the river by the company that would be located in the interior. The proposal in the, is to maintain the residential density requirement in the MU that is currently in conservation, which is one unit per acre. Also that mobile home parks would be allowed in this MU, but only on tracts of 10 acres or more. And, you know, with all the requirements that you just adopted not too long ago for, for the MHRV park. It allows all existing uses to be continuing uses in the overlay. It has a two-year, I don't know what, what I want to call it, a two-year renewal deadline. So that at the end of, after the, the overlay goes and, would go into effect within two years, if nothing, if we didn't have an industrial development, then the Ascension Economic Development Corporation Board would make a recommendation to the parish council to either do away with it or to extend, extend it for, you know, another period. So, you know, we, we just thought that was proper to do. You know, if it doesn't, you know, sell or look like it's going to sell, there's no sense to keep pursuing it. So there is a two-year window in there that we have to perform. Just to give you an idea of, of how much acreage is included in each of, of those proposed categories, it's about 11,000 acres of heavy industrial, 2,700 of medium, 1,800 of light, and 450 acres of mixed, mixed use. And those are round numbers. As far as the path forward from here, this project is continued, contingent upon approval of this overlay. We're not going to be able to get funds to go any further on due diligence unless this overlay is approved from, from LED. While this process is taking place, which is going to take about three months, we are going ahead and do the rail feasibility study and the dock feasibility study, because both of those are deal killers. It's not just a simple matter of, you know, it's a wonderful thing, we've got 450 feet of, of, of frontage on, on the UP Railroad, but we know pretty much intuitively that DOTD is not going to let us put a grade crossing against, on Highway 1. It will have to build an overpass or overpasses depending on, and so we, we just need to find out what exactly we need to do to get rail service into this property. And then obviously, the other critical thing being the dock locations, the barge and ship docks in there. And if, if one of those two or the rezoning or the overlay doesn't go through, that'll be a deal killer and we'll go tuck our tails, bring our legs and go find other property.
Mike, I know Councilman Joseph has spoken to the residents in the area, and are they, are they in favor of this now? Is he, is he, I know he's working with you on trying to make all this happen and get that mixed-use area. Mixed-use areas is where the people currently live, where there are some residents in those areas.
That is correct.
They're going to be able to open small businesses and do things like that?
I mean, I, you know, I'm not going to stand up here and pretend to speak for the landowners, I can just say that generally speaking, they're supportive. I'm sure that when, when the time comes to appear before you on the, you know, public hearing, you know, there may be some people who speak against it. It's part of the process.
Mike, I have a question for you.
I'm sorry, yes.
So the, what's, what's the timeline that you're envisioning for getting the whole thing approved where you can start marketing this to potential people who want to come in and, and put in a high and heavy industrial site?
We are actually already marketing it, you know, with understanding people have to understand there's a process to go through. And, you know, we're looking at, you know, if everything goes, you know, in lockstep, that it would be August of this year before the overlay would actually be finally approved by, by the parish council. But we are, we, we are marketing it as we speak, and we're also going to, during this initial due diligence process, we're going, going to have a market feasibility study done also.
So the, the, if, if the council approves this in August, you still then have to do the due diligence studies for the rail and, and the dock after that?
No, that, they'll be done simultaneous to this process. So in August, hopefully, in August, we'll have the overlay and the rail and the dock feasibility and the market feasibility study completed.
So at that point, you'd be ready to go and if, if you had a customer ready to, or a business ready to come in, you'd be ready to handle that?
Within certain limitations, Mr. Prime. And you got to understand, there's no infrastructure over here. There's no, there's no power, well, I say no power, there's no industrial-grade infrastructure in this area, so there's a lot of work to do. You know, we have natural gas and we have brine, but, you know, other heavy industrial infrastructure roads, for, for example, would have to be developed. But, you know, these prospects we're dealing with, understand that takes time, and you know, you're, and they've got a pretty long time window too.
Are, is there, in the marketing that you've done, has there been any interest as of yet?
We actually have had a couple of people interested in this. And by the way, there, fail to mention, as I should have pointed out, there is already prof, you cut me off, there's already property, if you could turn that back on for me please? This property here is already zone heavy industrial. This is the souvenir property that you, you approved some number of months ago, and then there's a little bit of heavy up here around the, the Evan Hall.
Right.
And then the port property, which is down here, is already zone heavy and medium. And then of course, all the bachelor property is on medium intensity. So there is some available heavy industry zoning in there already, if, if we had an immediate, you know, need.
And what, what do you, have, have y'all looked at the projected impact that it will have on the West Bank and in particular, in the Donaldsonville area for employment? If we can, if, if this succeeds and you have a heavy industrial park, will that ultimately boost the economic viability of Donaldsonville and the citizens there?
Yeah, without question, but I, you know, we have not done a, a full impact study and that will be done. We are, I'm sure to point out also that up on the front of, of Highway 1, we're, we're suggesting that in addition to the light and medium intensity buffers, that we put, we put another 660-foot MU buffer, not a buffer in there, but we put 660-foot depth of MU in there to be able to accommodate the service companies that might want to locate there to service these projects as they locate there.
As you're looking at your impact stuff, if you talk to DOTD, do they have some potential bridge sites? across the river on the Iberville side that might help this development?
We have not had a direct discussion with DOTD about that. I think President Martinez has, and, and I think, you know, one of the proposals that's been floated around was the so-called West Bank Expressway, which, uh, the path or the paths that I've seen actually may cut across part of this property if it ever happens. And the bridge, the proposed bridge in Iberville is not too far upriver from where we're, I don't know exactly where it is, but it's not very far from here. Uh, that's my understanding.
Okay, great.
Wait, you know, Mike, if, if this gets ultimately approved, would that spur DOTD into making some infrastructure improvements on the West Bank? Because, I mean, I look at Highway one, that's four-lane till you get to White Castle if you're going south. And then it's two lanes from White Castle all the way into Donaldsonville. With those kind of things, having this corridor here, would that help?
I would certainly like to think so, Mr. Pryor.
Like to think so, too. I don't know if, uh, I don't know how DOTD works, though, so...
I don't either.
Mike, I, um, met with, um, well, I went to the Donaldsonville council meeting last night, talked to Mayor Sullivan and, and, uh, Commission Chair, uh, Oakwin, and the other commissioners about this and, and that you would be presenting here tonight. They may be watching us now, uh, they're very interested, obviously. And I would recommend that you and Taylor and, and Bill and, and the rest of you go and make a presentation to, uh, you know, get yourself on the agenda and make a presentation to Donaldsonville.
That's a good advice, we will do that.
Hope that has a very positive impact on Donaldsonville in the future.
Mike, how close the, the high-intensity section that, closest to Donaldsonville? How close is that to the actual city limits itself?
I'm not exactly sure where the city boundary is, Mr. Pryor. It may be...
And then you've got smoke, but it was not really in the city, but, but it's a residential area that, uh, that is... Yeah, I'm, it, it looks...
Someone brought up an issue the other day about the, the fact that, that the lower end, the downriver end of Souvenir is, which is HI now, heavy industry is not too far from Lowry School. And, uh, I think we actually did a measurement, as I recall, Taylor helped me, at the property line from that property line to the school property line is like eleven hundred feet. And from the school building to the property line is like eighteen hundred, something like that. If memory serves, I've got that written down here somewhere.
So all, all, all we're being asked to do today is approve a public hearing on this at our next council meeting, is that right, staff?
Next planning meeting or council meeting?
Our next zoning meeting.
Zoning meeting?
Zoning meeting. And then from there, if, to whether or not we make a recommendation to the full council?
Right, we're going to, if, if you move this forward, on the next zoning commission agenda, there will be one public hearing to recommend approval for the code piece, the piece that will define in the book the overlay. And there will be a second public hearing for the map, which for this exercise is just the boundary. It's just showing, depicting graphically where the limits of the overlay are. And that line will ultimately be placed on our zoning map with a legend item.
Of an overlay.
That shows, this is where the limits of the overlay are. And there's a couple of the code amendments that are going to follow, uh, based on what the overlay is saying. Uh, but that, we don't want to get hung up on that right now. We're trying to enact the overlay at this point.
Will there be two public hearings the same night or two same...
Nope, same night.
Okay.
So what do we have to do to move it forward? We don't need a motion and...
No, just, at this point, y'all can make a motion to have a public hearing next month on this item.
On the agenda.
There you go.
I think that's...
I'll offer that motion.
Second.
All the team?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion passed unanimously. Place this item on the subsequent zoning commission meeting.
Gentlemen, we appreciate your cooperation and look forward to working with you and your staff very closely on this very important item.
Great work, Mike.
Can I get a motion for adjournment?
Yeah, I'll move it.
Second?
I'll say.